I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we stand and salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jayden, could you read the Sunshine Statement, please?
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the following manner: Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January eighth, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date.
Good roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Yeah.
Mr. Lyons?
Here. All right, move on to the work session. First up, we have the sewer utility annual report. We're gonna kick that over to CME, please.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Keith Chervallo. I'm with CME Associates. I'm a Senior Vice President and Director of the Water and Waste Water Department. So, in accordance with our authorization, we prepared a sewer utility annual report. It basically gives description of the facilities, gives an overview of the sewer system. And in accordance, our preparation included site visits to go out to all the pump stations, meeting with the superintendent, walk through the treatment plant, look at records, capital projects, capital improvements in the past, review of the capital improvement plan, and compile all that information. So it's pretty good in one report for everyone's reading and enjoyment. But, so, in the report, it goes through several sections. One of the sections is the the collection system, which actually is all the lines that are throughout the township. Most of the collection system was installed in 1967. That's when it all started, anyway. And that was the beginning of the installation of it. There's over sixty-four miles of gravity sewer in the system of varying sizes. Four miles of horse mains, nine pump stations to have throughout the the system. And three of those pump stations are still an older version called a can-type station, which they're actually on the capital improvement plan to upgrade those. Those facilities, we have all the pumps and control panels located underground. So the operator has to go down in a confined space in order to get to those controls and pumps. So what we've been doing with other stations throughout the township is converting those to a submersible-type pump station, which actually makes a kind of like a some pump in your house. And the operators don't have to go down into any confined space. Those pumps are removed without having to enter any confined space. So there's three more of those pump stations left throughout the township that are the can-type ones, when you hear those reference. Another area in the township is the Sweets Run, basically an interceptor line, about thirteen thousand people. It runs through this Sweets Run area. That line is all ACP, asbestos cement pipe. Based on the age of that and the criticality of that, that main is pretty important to the township because of the amount of flow it carries and where it's located. It's pretty, it's in an inaccessible area in most locations. So we're actually have some recommendations in the report to to evaluate the conditions of that line. There's some different alternatives on how you can do that, but they have some methods where they can load the camera down through there. They use some sonar to see how much material may be collected on the bottom of the pipe. And they use some light art and lasers to look at the exposed areas that are above the water line and cameras to video it all. So it's a way to get an evaluation and assessment to see the actual condition of that. Because that that ACP pipe, which you have a lot of around town, it kind of has a lifespan on it with the gases in that pipe. They say fifty, sixty, seventy-five years. You know, it varies depending on the gases. We saw the pipe along Route 130 that, you know, the gases along there were pretty bad and attacked the pipe. And it started deteriorating and failing there.
What do you mean gases? So everybody understands what that means. You mean just the toxic fumes and stuff?
Yeah, the hydrogen sulfide gas that's in the store, yeah. From it splashing around, it generates more of it. It releases it into the air, collects, and it basically attacks the upper sections and the exposed sections of the pipe, usually the crown of the pipe along there.
So that's where we do get a lot of rock, you would say?
Yeah.
Or break down of the pipe at that level?
Yeah, it starts to deteriorate over time, so it'll accelerate it.
One second. Could you just hear a little bit louder, so the audience can hear. This is for recording. So use your outside voice. So use your outside voice, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
In addition to the collection system, the other main component of your, the sewer utility, is actually the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant collects all the flow from throughout the township. The wastewater treatment plant is designed for two and a half million gallons a day. That's what the design point of the treatment plant is. Basically, the flow goes through different processes as it travels through the plant. There's some screenings in the beginning of the plant. It goes through the reactors, the three large tanks that are out there that have processes in there. And then it goes through disc filters that filter out any material that may be in there, ultraviolet disinfection, and then the flow goes back out to the the Rancocus Creek. So, so that's another part of your system. We walked through there. Right now, there's actually a project that's starting on one of those those tanks out at the facility. There's three of them. The contractor's getting geared up now and getting ready to begin their work, I believe, in the next month or two. They had the pre-construction meeting just recently. So we're getting some mittles in from them, and we're getting ready to start the actual construction and the upgrades to that tank. So that's one out of the three that are out there.
What's the status of the other two?
They're operational right now. So we need to leave those in operation while we do the one tank. So the idea was to get the one tank done, monitor the operations at the plant, and then go out and bid with the second tank after that. So just over time, there's some corrosion. Some of the steel, the upper levels of the steel are starting to, there's pinholes in the tanks. So they just have to watch the operations and monitor that, but, so.
Keith, can you just add what the typical life expectancy is for the treatment that we're doing for the tanks?
For the tanks themselves?
Yeah, like the last time that we did this in town, when the tank was, the new tank was installed in the late nineties, from my recollection.
Yeah, these were installed in the late nineties. These tanks are in operation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The majority of all the components are underwater, in the, you know, submerged in the sewage. A lot of the deterioration that you see on these tanks is right at the water line, where it's just above, where it's in the oxygen, and then it's in the sewer. So that's where you get some of the deterioration mostly. So that's where the concentration of the the upgrades on those tanks is going to be, is right around the top, where it's in that transition area. Other than that, it'll be replacing components, sandblasting, painting, recoating, and general upgrades.
Yeah, I actually, I took a tour of mine. If you had that chance to take a tour of mine. I did see the work that needs to get repaired, but done. The top of the tank, you can see where it's starting to break down.
Yeah.
If we're talking about shutting down one of the tanks, any impact on the surrounding area? The gardens, the neighborhood, helping to slow down, and we have to use less water, less water. By shutting one down, we have capacity in those two, making it letting these guys work.
Yes. Yeah, the the operations will continue the same. It won't affect, there won't be any restrictions needed on flow into the plant. So.
I noticed from your summaries, when you're summarizing the home section, you recommend the upgrade for the system. Have we appropriated the contract yet, capital, capital, all of it, or do we still have yet to appropriate it?
I don't believe they're appropriated. Yeah, for the for the first one.
One, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they're kind of laid out on the capital plan over a several-year period. So the other two, I think, are probably out five, six, seven years. Yeah. Yeah. We've we've done similar upgrades to several of the other pump stations over the last few years. Yeah.
And it's really, it's just that it's had me in the top ring, if you see, and not the appropriate.
Oh, I'm hoping that the pumping stations, oh, I'm going to let this count, there's a million dollars for several pumping stations that have to be appropriated. And I was wondering if we had already appropriated all the money for all the pumping stations, but not currently not.
I don't believe so, but, so.
Okay.
How much, how much of the township does it really?
I believe it's fifteen homes, ten homes?
I'm wondering how this works.
What's, I believe, I believe it's only a few homes. There's one pump station over there that goes Riverside. But I think it's very few.
I don't know offhand. It's not a large percentage of it. There's portions of the township that that do go, like the new development that's right off of Chester Avenue. Like the homes there, that eventually goes over to the Riverside Treatment Plant. But the majority of the township population goes to the plant.
That's being, obviously, that's where they're still, so forth and so on, that's right. So, who's compensated with this talk for that? That is coming right out of the, are they paying that stuff at the particular? You said they're handling, they're still, right?
So there, when the connection applications were done, there was a portion of their connections that physically go to Riverside. And then there's another portion that actually goes into the town. There's kind of a demarcation line over on that that section now.
Just some other general information about the your sewer system. The the operator of the system requires licenses from the NJDEP. Your system requires a C-three license and an S-three license. That's basically for the collection system and the treatment system. Your superintendent has those licenses and above, actually, on the collection system. So the highest-grade licenses are four. And that, those licenses vary on the population, types of treatment, the complexity of the treatment plant. So everything, you're you're good there. You have all the required licenses, and the backup operator has his licenses in case superintendent's not available.
Do you know how many of our people have licenses?
I do not know that offhand. Of all the people that have the licenses, I I know the the director and, I guess, his assistant both have those.
That's what I was wondering, whether they're backups or people in case they leave or something.
Yeah, you you have the immediate backup. I don't know how far down. We can dig into that. It it isn't, I don't want to say an issue, but a lot of places are seeking, you know, people with licenses and trying to get people qualified to get those licenses to have them. So they are, they are valuable to have. Yeah, right.
Down that end, Smith, you speak up. It's not coming through for the recording, guys.
And the the report also includes a list of the the ongoing capital projects, and then the the capital projects that are on the capital improvement plan going forward. So like we talked about before, there's the the project that's going on at the plant right now, which is the the tank that's being rehabilitated. That one's just getting started. I guess Leon Avenue is some of the collection system work that's going on. And we're closing out some other projects, like the Route 130 project. There's some smaller projects that were some water services out at the pump stations that were required to be upgraded with backflow preventers. So, and then looking into the future, like we had talked about, there's the three remaining can pump stations that are on the capital improvement plan. The other two tanks that are out at the treatment plant are scheduled to be upgraded after the first one's completed.
The remainder of the the Leon lines are basically from St. McGill and then Norman Avenue. And Norman Avenue CCTV is part of the Leon project. And then also, as part of all of our road programs, we're incorporating sewer upgrades and evaluations as as we go along.
So that's, that's a general overview of what's in the, what's in the report. Like I said, we update it periodically. We request it, you know, through meetings with the the sewer utility director and the other staff, and through our, through our history here. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I mean, the only thing, just in your opinion, the overall health of the system and our equipment?
In my opinion, the collection system, some of the concerns are some of the aging pipes, especially the ACP. There are sections that are PVC, which those are, you know, in good condition. A lot of the newer sections are all PVC. So there's some concerns in there, which we have been addressing on, like, mainly the Route 130 and then the Sweets Run area. The treatment plant, it's gone through some upgrades that have improved the operations out there over the years. So there's, there's been some of the facilities, like the screening in the front of the plant. That's newer, looking the last ten, fifteen years, talking sewer plant new. But the disc filters, that's a newer process. We got rid of the the sand filters that were out there and the disc filters. So there's been upgrades out there. But it's, it's one of those things where you have to always stay on top of it so you don't fall behind, which the township's been doing. So it's been preparing the capital plan, looking at what they need to do, and then moving forward with that, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, one quick question. I know you mentioned Sweets Run and Route 130. Are there any other ACP pipe that might concern you in town?
I guess Ed can answer some more of this, but also, as part of the road program, they are doing video inspections of the source to look at the sewer so we can coordinate with any road improvements also. And so they're doing evaluations there.
Yeah, I would say to 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 you, ultimately, your question, the areas that would be more concerned, the areas that are more susceptible to the gas. So you have your Route 130 corridor where we saw what we had in Phase One. And then ultimately, that discharges into the, basically where the bridge is over Route 130. There downstream to the Fifth Street Pump Station and Fifth Street down to the plant, which is, you know, a couple miles almost. So those are the areas that are in the report, just on our, you know, our our focus. Versus when you have, like, we're doing the road programs, we have ACP in in these, you know, areas. And they'll be identified to go on a lining list and then ultimately do, you know, group those together. So we've done that on some, some roads already in town, if it's in good enough condition to leave in place.
Ed? Thank you very much for the report and the projects going on in the future. Yeah, but they're easier to say on computers, maybe, if you can make it, because I do that a lot. Other than that, they're really complex to do. But, yeah, that was actually a good line, mine, that's made out of that.
Yeah, we can, I mean, in the future, we can mod a larger-sized drawing, fold it up and stick it in the back. So it'll be easier to say.
I just hacked it back as a mold. Now, we appreciate it. We're good?
Yeah.
Thank you. So appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up is the discussion on the proposed resolution for civil service exemption. And that concerns the police and the out-of-barr Admiral Chief here. And Al, if you guys want to chime in on that and tell us the gist of this. The thing I would say is it's something that we can do, just something that we can do that's going to allow us to legally, without violating any rules, get officers in the door at a quicker clip, as long as they, I don't want to stipulate any of the structure, but as long as they've gone to an accredited course, school, that would allow them to sort of event having to sit for the civil service because they drag all that out.
In a nutshell, yes. I mean, civil service is giving us this additional tool for recruitment. It's very hard to get officers right now. By the time the list comes out, which is roughly November, the next academy is, the first one is January in Camden. We can't make that with the timelines, any requirements set forth by the Police Training Commission. The next one after that would be Gloucester, and that's even tough to make. So with this additional tool, it will enable us to go to job fairs. Instead of telling the people, take the test in March, we'll know in November. If we can hire you, we're losing candidates to other towns. Ed Georder was able to hire four or five. Detective Wagner has looked into this a lot more. We know other towns are getting officers quicker. Cinnamon's in, we've Willingboro. So it's just another tool in our arsenal to help. And, you know, we have a couple of job fairs run at Rutgers. We're going to try and host one on May seventh. Actually, we have it advertised. We are going to host one. And it's just going to give us another tool to get officers quicker. You know, they're, they are not trained. They have to be trained, like, within nine months, nine months. We have to get them trained through a PPC-certified academy. We just found another academy up in Ocean County, but the lieutenant and I visited, you know, which we would find acceptable to use. And that class starts in November, which is very good. Tonight Academy runs from, like, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. You know, the normal course is about six months. It's just 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So it's about the same distance, whether we go to Gloucester or Camden, an hour, give or take, with traffic. And there'd be less traffic at that time, but it's another academy in between that if we had this resolution in place and it was approved, you know, by council and all that, that we could get officers quicker.
Yeah, I know that, and Mayor, I thought, you know, obviously, we already put those smaller works to hire some more officers, have some more upper levels of the department.
Yes.
So this is a tool that we can use, that helps us to get it rolling. I'm all for it. And I appreciate all of your taking into this and bringing, you know, you guys bringing this up. And as soon as we can get this done, I don't see a problem unless anybody don't capitalize on it.
Yeah, so the rest of the groups are for it. It just, it just involves a resolution. So Tom, I think you summed it up accurately, and Chief, you kind of summed it up from there as well. It's not really an exception or bypassing civil service. It's right in the civil service statute, so it's a tool that they give you. Like you said, it kind of avoids the old deal on the list, that whole thing where you have to wait. You can go out and recruit, and then once you have that officer in mind, they then have a nine-month period to graduate from that DTC course. What you guys would have to do as a council is adopt a resolution just to give yourself the ability to avail yourself of that option. And then you just have to make sure that you have a nepotism policy in place as well, which I believe you do, but we'll double-check it. But again, that's just to avoid any kind of nepotism. So civil service kind of cuts all that out. If you're going to be hiring in this fashion, they just want to make sure that you have a nepotism policy in place. They have certain language they need you to have as well. So we'll double-check and make sure your nepotism policy is consistent. But if everyone's all for it, yeah, you can proceed with that resolution.
And fast forward five years down the road, we can use this as a tool, or we can use this regular civil service process?
Correct. This is just something that you can use. And I'm not even sure if it'll exist five years from now. It's something that kind of came into play when towns were having trouble recruiting police officers or having trouble with the hiring process. It was kind of talked about as probably being a temporary thing, but it still exists. You can still avail yourself of it. So five years down the road, yeah, you could still make either choice. If this still exists. If this doesn't exist, then you're just back to what you're normally doing.
It's like having a framing hammer and a finisher.
Yeah, I mean, I would still want to use civil service lists when when it's possible, you know. That's a good tool to have, you know. Just that they're enabling us to get our approval.
Everybody having comments, anything?
I spoke to Matt, and, you know, we spoke about his, you know, the department's needs and recruiting. Riverside has them signs out there. They're in the same booth, Klinka. And, you know, we talked about a few things, and we can obviously discuss them issues as we move on.
Right.
You know, talking about a traffic, you know, traffic department or recruit guys just for traffic. I think that's an excellent thing that we can look into. But, yeah, I think it's a great idea. And it's something that, you know, I don't think anybody in town will have a problem. It's something I think would be.
Just so you see it in your packet, you do have a resolution from from an adjacent town who's done it. So that kind of gives you an idea of what the resolution would look like.
Could we please put that follow-on on that, Steve, again?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, Detective Wagner, I just want to thank him for everything he's done, getting the timeline, and he's got peer-to-peer interviews and, you know, backgrounds. And there's a lot that has to be done in, you know, relatively short amount of time. He rallied it in the better.
Appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Next up, we have 2025 sewer claims. I was going through these. I'm I'm sure everyone else has too. I don't know if Jamie, you want to make any comments on it? I just had some concerns with one on here. I had Jamie take a look at the usage for the first three months of this year. And it looks like that usage is the same, if not higher. So I don't know if that one is something we should approve or not, but do you want to expound on any of these?
You want to go through them one by one, or?
Actually, if 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 you can, the, it really expand on that number three. And some of the concerns that I had, and if anybody else that looked at it had those concerns.
Okay. So the first two on the last item, just listed the account numbers. I left the addresses off. But they both submitted that they had leaks. They were repaired. The claims are there. For number one, their usage for the first three months of 2025 went down to forty thousand gallons. Their 2025 billing is based on one hundred and thirty-two thousand gallons, and you can see what they were in previous years. So my recommendation is the, we always look at the average of the last three years, so my recommendation is thirty-five. Same thing with number two. They submitted all their receipts. In 2022, they had fourteen thousand gallons, ten, ten, and in 2025, a hundred and four. There was a leak. They submitted their water bills from New Jersey American Water and the receipts for the repair in the first three months of 2025. So for next year's billing, there are six thousand gallons. So they're back down to the minimum. My recommendation is eleven thousand gallons, and that'll put them right around the minimum billing. Number three is the one that we had a couple, Tom had a couple of questions on, just due to some, you know, issues in the home. The seems like the water is getting left running. I looked at their 2025 first three months, and there are twenty-three thousand gallons. So it's consistent with what it is in 2025. The water is getting processed through our sewer system. So, I mean, if you wanted to make an adjustment, the prior three years was twelve thousand, but they did, there was no leak. The billing is, you know, was imported correctly from New Jersey American. Number four, it's another repair, ruptured pipe. Receipts were provided. Their 2025 billing was seventy thousand gallons. The last three years were ten, ten, and eleven. I would recommend the minimum for that one. They're down to seven for the first three months of 2025. Number five, it looks like that was just an import reading error when we get the file from New Jersey American. Sometimes there's just, if they've had adjustments, sometimes our system doesn't pull it in correctly. They were ten, 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 and then fifty-nine thousand gallons in 2025 for the 2025 billing. Again, my recommendation is ten. I can clearly see on the New Jersey American that there was, it just did not import correctly. And then number six, this is a rental property, and there was no, this was the correct amount of water used. They just don't feel that it should be based on the prior tenant's usage. We do an adjustment for a sewer new owner. So if you're, if you're a new owner, you get adjusted to the minimum for your first year until we can get an idea of where your readings are. If you wanted to do something similar for the tenant, of course, in 2024, they had a really high of seventy-two. So I put my recommendation at thirty-six if you wanted to do an adjustment for that one. And their reading for 2025, this is based on the new tenant, so next year, there are twenty-one thousand gallons. So it is significantly less. The new owner seems to be using significantly less water. But just based on the average in three years, like we do for all the others, it's thirty-six thousand. So that's all the claims we have so far. They do still have till April 30th to submit their claims. I I think we're, I don't think we're going to get many more, but we could get a couple stragglers.
All right, yeah, I mean, I'm all in, you know, agreement with the recommendations except that, you know, number three. I mean, they're still using actually more. So I don't, whatever his pleasure is.
The recommendation is to, uh, 32,000?
So that's the average of the, um, you know, I, yeah, so there's really no recommendation, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's they're, they're using more than.
So next year their billing will be even a little bit, a little bit higher, yeah, a little bit higher.
They're, they're using it.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could do, you know, a one-time adjustment for this year and, you know, it's really, that, that one I kind of didn't make a a recommendation on, I just kind of said, if you wish to reduce it, that there's your average for the prior three years.
They said the residents using excess of water, cared for his life.
Yeah, so there, so I think the issue is just water is getting left running. You know, for a significant period of time before it's getting cut, so. But like I said, there's not, there's no, the water is being used and it is getting processed through our sewer system. There, there's no reduction, yeah, there's no, I don't really see a reduction in anything, so.
Yeah.
I kind of just.
We stay, stay at the 21, yeah. Yeah. And then we'll take a look at it next year.
Okay. That's what everybody, so we will have to do this, we will do these adjustments by resolution.
Yes.
So at the next meeting, you'll see the resolution, we'll have them all on there. And um, and then the tax office can make the adjustments. And all of these, what we tell them to do is pay the first quarter and we will make the adjustment after that, so. They, they have been notified to at least pay their, their first quarter because they have till April 30th, they don't, we don't want to hit them with any late fees. So they, most of them, I think I already checked, they've paid their first quarter. So when we do the adjustments, any credits will just get moved forward.
All right, thanks for all your hard work on that, appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, so next up, 2025 budget discussions. And before we start with that, the timeline for introduction and all that is?
So we are looking to introduce it at the first meeting in May with adoption at the first meeting in June.
Okay, perfect. All right, um, I've had, you know, several questions, concerns, or not concerns, but stuff that I got a bunch of answers from, either from Jamie or the mayor and stuff. I think, I'll let me chime in, I think you did a good job with the budget and whatnot. Obviously, we're looking at another, another zero tax increase.
Yes, we are.
And, you know, we're looking, you know, to add officers, which you just heard, that may be towards the fourth quarter. Or, I mean, we'd love to do it as quick as we could, but it might be, you know, in a perfect world, the end of the third quarter, into the fourth quarter. Because that's, you know, obviously when you hire new officers, there's a cost to that and whatnot. And, you know, we, we got some aggressive projects going on throughout the town, but if you would like to start that one off, go for it.
Well, no, like you said, you know, we did go with, you know, no increase this year. I know that everybody's had an opportunity to look through the budget and see if you had any questions. I know you had just brought up for the, the police department, I think we had talked about, you know, that we're increasing the officers, we're going to be looking towards.
Just rank loud, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so um, we hadn't done an increase or much of an increase in this year. Because at the time, we hadn't anticipated increasing the police strength from the 32 to the 35. Um, our anticipation is that I, we're going to be looking more towards 2026, we're going to be needing to do that increase.
Right, I believe I heard me wrong, we're still funded for 32 right now.
Yes, right, and we're currently, I think we're at 27, so we have some room there for.
We get a couple higher.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, listen, ultimately, I would love to be at 35 tomorrow. It's not going to happen, but, you know, that's going to be in preparation of, you know, the next year. I know Tom had called me earlier, he had had a couple of questions. But we're going to turn to council and see if you guys had had any questions as you were going through.
Yeah, I just saw the increases for the pensions and the little basic increases, the line on the stress costs.
Yeah, just. And then use your outside voice.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to have to share mics here, so.
No, but I just, you know, pretty much everything across the board was pretty stable. Just the normal increases, the union contracts, pension contributions, insurance costs, we all know that. I think the administration has done a great job over the last couple of years of keeping things in mind. Town is a really on good solid financial ground.
Yep.
Getting a lot of good things done and I think it's a solid budget for this year.
Another question I had, so I was trying to look at and see, do we have sufficient monies for the communications person? Or the company, whatever.
I have to turn to the monitor. We do have some stuff in there for the, for the communication program, it was, so the communications money had already been put in.
Right.
Prior to us talking about.
Right.
So the communications, I think we're looking more towards June is when we're going to start that. So we're going to, it's going to be more of a phase in thing, so we can utilize what we had prior.
Okay.
And then in next year, we'll be able to ramp up, but hopefully we'll, by next year, it'll be more of a, we can keep the cost down and keep the programs still running.
Good, good.
All right, so one question, fund balance is okay, is that the okay?
Yeah.
What, what is our surplus at this point, or after the budget?
So I have it. So currently, our fund balance is at 12.6.
And that's before or after? Did we use some?
That's at the end of 2020.
That's at the end of 2020.
Okay, how about, what are we using for the budget?
Five million.
Five, so we're down to seven?
Seven, six.
Okay, right.
Which is a significant, slightly increased from last year. I think what we used last year was 4.9, we're using five million this year.
So we went up by a hundred thousand.
Little increase to keep the.
To keep the tax.
Well, it's where it is at. That's fine, I'm just curious.
Yep.
One of the, the good parts is we're very fortunate to have a 98 plus percent collection rate, so that's, that's a good.
Yeah, I've had a quick question, I know that we are looking to purchase some new police vehicles. And obviously I know that they need, you know, newer equipment. I was thinking about just from a, like a fuel efficiency standpoint, if, you know, potentially look at like maybe a hybrid vehicle, you know, that has, you know, the, the battery so that they can, you know, use that initially for the gas.
Are you talking hybrid or are you talking like a full electric?
No, no, not a full electric, I know that there's some challenges with that.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that they make a police cruiser in a hybrid due to the per, I only say that because of the performance of it. Usually your hybrid vehicles don't perform at a level that might be consistent with a police vehicle.
Well, how do you choose this thing to do? Who chooses that? We don't have margins.
I mean, listen, I get it, I think, I think it's a great idea for, you know, when we're doing, you know, the roadwork and so forth and so on. And when they're setting an island for a long period of time, it's going to save fuel. Maybe that's something we can look at for if there's a vehicle that's just set for maybe that type of duty, that would make sense to make.
They might be better, and I think I've talked to you before about this, for a detective or administrative car where it's not, detectives aren't getting, you know, they're going to crime scenes. They're here, getting, taking stuff to laboratories, administrative cars are more, are more here at the station. They're not out in the road, they're not working 24/7 like most of the gas engine cars are. Mac and Jeffrey Ford, you know, our local rep can see what, what the cost is, if, if anyone's doing it. I know some towns are doing electric, but there's a big cost associated with that, especially when the batteries go. Whether they go on fire or when they go.
Yeah, we'll let them experiment, let's, let's, let's see how they do with the people.
They're fast cars. But, now I can look into the hy, yeah, the hybrid. Yeah, appreciate that, just because again, just from a fuel, you know, perspective, we're able to save a little bit there.
Yeah.
That's always better.
One thing I had on the sewer, how do we stand as far as, we haven't had a sewer increase in, I don't know, what, 10 years, 12 years? How are we going to, how are we looking as far as the sewer surplus and going forward, rate increases?
So I did have this conversation with our auditor, I kind of came into the budget a little late, so I played a lot of catch-up. Right now, our sewer surplus is $7,066,847.94. We're only using about $760,000 to balance the budget. He, he feels like we're in a great financial position for sewer also, with no need for an increase.
Yeah, I had the, I had the same questions and concerns and I was given what she just said. You know, looking at everything we need to do, we want to do, and like you guys have heard me say, 15, 20 years down the road. Viability in that plant and all that kind of stuff, but uh, yeah, the auditors seem to think we're all good or whatnot, but I think at some point since, I, I don't think it's been raised since 2010 now. So, you know, you're looking at 15 years. Now, the flip side, and I just moved to town in 2010, I wasn't, you know, paying attention to all this stuff or whatnot. My understanding, and you long-time residents can, can chime in on that, there, there was a increase to the rates when it got taken over. So obviously that has stabilized since we still have a good surplus and everything and it's working. But I do believe we need to be very aggressive with maintenance, 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 like Keith, right, like Keith said. You know, because I, when I was still working, the sewage authorities and MUAs, that was their mantra, maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. Because if you don't, that's what you keep ahead of the game where you don't have, listen, water main breaks happen, but they have it, right? And, but you can induce them with maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. So I, I had the same thoughts and I, I mean, it's something maybe down the road we need to look at. Especially when you look at that chart of that Keith had in the report, what's going on now? And you see 26, 28, 29, and those projects that need to be done, is there going to be enough money? Anybody else on the budget?
I think, by the way, I think the mayor, you, you and Jamie and the others did a great job. Put it together, I want to be aligned and I have to agree with the general, I will change any separate questions I'm having. I'm going to answer, so.
All right, if there's nothing else.
Does anybody have any questions on the capital, did everyone look at the capital projects? Okay.
Yep.
So I'm ju, I am wa, I don't know if you, I'm waiting just for one number, that's for the Haynes Mill ready drainage, so once that we get that number, I'll plug that in and let you know. But other than that, I think we're, we're all.
All good?
All good.
You're good.
All right, we're going to move back up to continue the meeting, should we click these off? Thanks, Matt. I thought so, but I keep losing track of my chair. I would help you, Lynn, but you bend better. That's right, good workout. All, I'm still.
We're still good, yep.
We're still good, so I can, I can move on. Okay, moving on. Ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 2025-09, bond ordinance authorizing supplemental funding for the completion of sewer utility system improvements, creek road sewer line extension, and for the township of Delran. Appropriating the sum of 300,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes of the township of Delran, county of Burlington, New Jersey, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 300,000. Making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions and connections with the foregoing. This is on second reading, so it needs a public hearing, can I have a motion to go into public?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, we're now in public on ordinance 2025-09, and that ordinance only. Anyone that wants to make a comment on that ordinance, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized by the chair. And you can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing no hands, I'd like to get a motion to come out of public.
Motion.
One, 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 sorry, Tom. I thought, I thought someone else was going to go up. Thank you.
Hello again, Steve Grello, Delran. Good evening, everyone. I'm not here to oppose progress, but to promote transparency and fiscal awareness when it comes to how we finance our public projects. Like the $300,000 bond ordinance you're considering this evening, and there was very good questions you were asking, thank you. I agree that the bonds are powerful tools that allow local governments to improve infrastructure without depleting the cash reserves. But let's not forget, this is borrowed money. We're leveraging the township's future taxes to get things done today. That's not inherently bad, especially when it comes to vital projects like sewer line extensions, emergencies too. But it does raise important questions that taxpayers deserve to have answered, such as, one, what is the total cost of the project including interest? How will this bond affect our debt load and credit position as a township? Will it result in higher sewer rates or property taxes in future years? And finally, is this project being done in the most cost efficient way possible? I'd like to suggest that the township include going forward, a simple fiscal impact sheet, impact sheet for each bond ordinance. There is a lot that you have there, I agree, but there's some other things that I'd like to see. Nothing too complicated, just things such as a project summary, debt service schedule, source of repayment, either taxes, sewer utility, revenues, et cetera, and potential impact on future budgets. This would help residents and even future councils, even the new mayor, of course, understand the long-term financial commitments we're making today. A second quick suggestion, since we're now in budget season, maybe you consider hosting a finance 101 night for the residents and a question and answer to explain the budget, the bonding, capital improvement plans, and how to how to debt, how the debt factors into our planning. I'd be happy to help coordinate something like that with Jamie, if possible. At the end of the day, residents just want to be part of the process, and that starts with information, clarity, and it's all for transparency, which is good for everyone. So, thank you and thank you for your service, everyone.
Thank you. All right, Ed, on this project, the county is the lead on this project, correct? For, up until that spot?
You're talking about financially or from, from what perspective? As a lead?
Our, our portion is just coming up to get to.
Get it to the, to the upgraded county park that's in.
To the upgraded county park? And the ability of those three homes there to connect if they want, if they want to pay to connect, correct?
Yeah, so, so the way the product's being set up is that there will be a stubout essentially put to the property line for, for those three houses between where we're doing our tie-in and where the county park is. They don't need to tie in now, but generally speaking, if they're, if they're on septic system right now, if they want to connect, they can connect. But ultimately, if their system fails, their septic system, they would be required by the county health department to connect. And there's a couple nuances with that, but, but they'll have the ability to connect without having to go into the roadway.
Perfect, perfect. And that gets the, it all the way up to farmers against hunger and beyond, correct?
Uh, it's, it's going to stop right, right.
Right, farmers.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
So it's not going to continue beyond the, the funding. So it's not gonna continue beyond, um, the, the funding, um, is, is only gonna go to the basement portion, but which is getting up to that.
And our total outlay on it is?
Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's zero. I think the county's reimbursing the entirety of the project.
That's where I was going, the county took the, you know, for to do this. And this is our step in getting this done.
Correct.
Beautiful, thank you. Anybody else from the public?
I just wanna.
Uh, something to microphone, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Sam Hutchins, eight hundred South Chester. Thank you, actually, Tom Lyon, for that communication, but just to further expound on what you just said, to clarify, are you saying that we don't actually are gonna, that we're not gonna end up owing anything on, that we're not gonna owe three hundred thousand? It's not gonna come out of Delran, it's coming from the county, is that what you said?
So, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding of how it's operating is the township is in a shared service agreement with the county.
Okay.
So the township is funding the project, but it's getting paid for by the county.
So even though it's a bond, it still ends up being zero, is that true? I'm just asking, cause I wanted to clarify what you were saying.
Being funded.
Okay, winning.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just, just to, just one note, just because we are, we are running the project, so our engineer designed it. It's, it's being, you know, managed by the township, but then the funding is coming directly from the county. But we needed this in order to award the contractor.
And they're, they're ready to go as soon as we get this done, um, to start this project. Anybody else from the public, please? Yes.
Jim Repert, Delran. So this question is for Jamie. So you say that the three hundred thousand dollars, the, the county's gonna pay that or the state?
So the, the entire project, I believe, is one point three million, correct? That we bonded, I'm not, I don't remember.
I think it's slightly less than that, but, but ultimately the total amount that the township has bonded, that the county has already done stuff on their end, but since it's being run through financially through the township, the township needs to have the money in place prior to actually work.
So my question is, these bonds cost a lot of money to float. We have to pay an underwriter, we have to pay the lawyers, um, there's interest bearing on these things. Like how much is the Delran taxpayer on the hook for this? Are, are they, is the, is the state and the county playing for like the Goldman Sachs's of the world or?
So, I mean, I can get an answer from the CFO, um, for you, because that, that's more of like a financial and not that. But we haven't actually borrowed any money. So the only thing, you know, that's, it's cost us as of today was to draft this ordinance. Um, we haven't, you know, we're not, we haven't borrowed any money, there's no interest, um, that we're paying as of today.
But, but you're going to be, so that, this is a band, they call them, bond anticipation notes. So there's, there's a lot of cost behind this, that for the, these things to float to the market, because Delran's gonna get the money, but they're gonna get it from investors, it doesn't kind of float in thin air. Investors will buy these things through Wall Street Investment Bank. So then that, there's a lot of money involved in that, so I'm just curious of exactly how much the, the town's gonna pay. I would assume it's probably more than the three hundred thousand. So if you could give me that information, I'd appreciate that. All right, thank you very much, bye-bye.
Anyone else, sir?
Yeah. Was it gonna?
Name and address.
Good evening, Gary Katrinbone, two sixty-one Burning Tree Road in Delran. So I just wanted to say, uh, with regard to this, this ordinance, that we are getting, um, that while there will be some cost, we are getting an improvement to our sewer system. It'll be our sewer system, correct? So, so we're getting it, they're paying for it, and we're kind of paying the incidentals. I recognize that, uh, that some, you know, it would be great to have every penny launched out, but this is a situation where, where this is a solid win for the township, because we're getting the improvement and the county's paying for it. So all of the, all of the additional expense that would be incurred by, uh, the internal township staff and the professional staff to give a description of what would, what would the ultimate down-to-the-penny cost would be, would probably be, uh, uh, one of the larger line items in budget for this project. So I, I applaud you for, for going through the steps and this, I, we, I think we all recognize that this step is just a necessary evil in order to get the project done and the county to pay for it. So thank you.
Yeah, it's been in the works for quite a while, but thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, my name's Nancy Evans, I'm on Arch Street in Delran. And I've been one of the residents here who have been exceedingly concerned about our sewer system and our, and our wastewater treatment plant and everything else that's involved with it. And I'm listening to all of the statements that everybody's making regarding the annual report, the site visits, the pump stations, treatment plants, the, the pipes and the aging system that's been going on. All of the money that this township has paid, say over the last ten to twenty years, to invest into any type of bonds or to CME or to anybody else that's been involved in helping to allegedly fix our sewer system. Why is our sewer system so broken down? I have been here for seventeen years in New Jersey and in this township. In the seventeen years I have been here, my property taxes have completely doubled.
They, can I just, um, cause this is a public hearing on this ordinance?
Yeah, I, I, well, this is where I'm going, okay? So with this ordinance, you know, including this money here, wha, what, where have, where's all this money going to if our sewer system is in such dire need of repair after all this time? Especially under the previous mayor's jurisdiction and anybody who came before him. I just don't see that, you know, we're putting money into CME and everything else and these bonds, whatever, or we're requesting money for these bonds, and, and our sewer system is screwed, totally screwed. It's not working, it's going to fall down, fall in. I'm afraid my house is going to get completely inundated with sewage in my basement. And, and for what purpose? So you guys can keep collecting money and pay, and, and we get nothing in return? That's my question, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I motion to come out of public, please?
Motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. I need a, um, I need a motion to adopt, please.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Yeah.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye. Ayes have it. Uh, consent agenda. Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seventy-six, authorizing the purchase of two hundred and forty-four inch lawn mowers through the Omni Partners Government Purchasing Alliance National Co-op Purchasing Network National Contract in lump sum amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred. Uh, authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under cooperative, cooperative purchasing agreement. Uh, approval of mercantile licenses for Delran Self-Storage Fabric Dry Cleaning LLC. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye. Uh, minutes for approval, public meeting, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye. Um, proving the minutes for the work session, January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Oh.
Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye. Work session, February twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye. Public meeting, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Pia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Abstained. Next up, public comment. Um, open up to the public, uh, all, uh, comments, if you state your name and address for the record, will be directed to the council president. Uh, nothing can be redacted or rewritten, either audio or written. Uh, the public shall have five minutes to make the comment. Uh, can I get a motion to go into public, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, we're now in the public, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized from the chair and you'll state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes for public comment. Uh, let me go to the gentleman first. William J. Spitch, five eighteen Brown Street, Delran. Council president, this is gonna be directed to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, what is the current status at the residence of eight twelve Chester and eight fourteen Chester as it applies to the public health nuisance which appears to exist at that particular site? In particular, that one parcel with three pieces of heavy equipment, trees, dirt, and standing water. And under that particular public nuisance code, this causes a, this presents a problem to the residents of Delran.
Do you want me to answer now or do you want to ask the rest of the questions?
That's it, that's, that's all I have, is that particular.
Oh, that's the only question?
You can answer.
Oh, okay. So, um, code enforcement is aware. I know that they've talked to him and it's actively being investigated.
Okay, and what, what is the timeline on this, sir? When will this be addressed and finalized?
I don't have a timeline on it, I will have to get with, uh, code enforcement. They have policies and procedures they have to follow.
Okay, and will this be?
I can't give you that timeline.
Okay, will this be placed on the Delran website at some time in the future?
If legally, um, I don't know that it can due to privacy. I don't know that we can best direct that to Al.
Yeah, so what? Is, is it a code enforcement situation?
It's a code enforcement situation, it's the house that's literally next to the municipal building. He has some construction vehicles, some dirt, and it's, it looks like a construction site. Unfortunately, it's across the street from our school.
Okay, so yeah, so it's a code enforcement matter, it would be something that would end up in municipal court. It wouldn't necessarily be something that would go onto your website. Obviously, someone could get that information from the municipal court through an Oprah request. So it is public, it wouldn't be something you would typically put on your website, though.
All right, very well, thank you. That was my only question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam?
Sam Hutchins, eight hundred Chester. Um, I actually just had two quick things. First off, last, I believe it was last meeting, there was a woman who talked about asking questions and getting email responses. Um, and when she said that, I, I had kind of a thought. I know you guys are doing a really good job working on the communications forum. And I was thinking that once you guys square that away, if you could have a section where it has all the questions that we asked during the, you know, public comment, and then you can have the answers posted right there on your website that everybody would have access to, so I thought that would be kind of cool. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, um, for clarification, I know that it's really important to get new officers, and I, I love that we're trying to do that. I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the civil service exemption. Does, is that by any chance, if that won't, by having the exemption, that won't miss a step making sure that we're having quality people, right? That's just a, getting rid of a hurdle to keep us from getting more people? We're not gonna lose any quality based on haste, right?
No, and if you want, I can comment when my report, or I can comment now, and Al can chime. It, I mean, I don't want to take.
I just, no, I just wanted more for public clarification, yeah, tell me.
So what this does is, the, and Al, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, it, it, the, the steps to go through civil service for the test and then the academy, what this does, the, if an, if an individual goes to a qualified training college school that gets them up to speed on what they need to do, then they don't have to take the test, then they can go to the academy. The academy is never out of the equation.
Okay.
So basically, the person goes out on their own, takes the steps necessary to say, hey, I did X, Y, and Z, so I'm ready to go and go to the academy. So basically, it can have somebody who's aggressive get into the system, get to the academy, get trained quicker.
Love that.
Yeah, and, and the hire is temporary until that takes place, when then it becomes a permanent hire. So it's really just a way to speed up the process, it doesn't take away the training. It, it allows them to not take the test, cause there's a substitute for that, but they still have to go to the academy.
I thought you did answer that, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, mayor.
Good evening, everyone, Mary Janice, Delran. Um, and hello, Tom.
Hello.
Thank you. I just had a question, given all the, with all the sewer problems that were discussed and in regard to the two thousand twenty-five sewer claims, um, I was just wondering, why is the water usage going up? Um, is it because of leaks, uh, in the system, or is it because of more people? Um, and Jamie did say that she believes that it's because they're leaving the water running. I mean, is that fact? Do we know, has that been investigated? Or is just, this, just the water company, you know how they play their little tricks and, you know, all of a sudden?
We can answer this after your five minutes or as we go, it's up to you, I can answer it when you're done.
Okay, you can answer it now, Tom, thank you.
So, and I'll let Ja, Jamie correct me if I, and I don't want to go in details on his person's personal life. Um, but let's just say, um, there's someone in the house that may be leaving water running, not on purpose, but they don't realize it or whatnot.
Okay.
So the usage is actually real. So the issue I'm having with that one is, it, it's one thing if you, you have a leak in your pipe and you don't know, and all of a sudden you get your, your bills and go, holy crap, unintended. That, my rates are way up, so you investigate and you find out the leak, well, that's, we want to help those people, right? And we want to help this person, except they're using the water and it's going to our system. So these are individual water situations, it's not the system, it's the individual, the meter at their house.
Oh, okay, all right, good, cause I know the, the tricks that the water company can play too. And you're like, I know, and then you call them, and they're like, oh yeah, sorry about that. Meanwhile, you're paying all this money to them. Um, and I just have one comment, um, it doesn't require an answer or anything. Um, it's a shame I, you know, the problem we're having with the, you know, hiring of police officers, uh, I just, I truly believe that's because of the defunding the police in two thousand twenty. So that's, that's the repercussions we're facing right now. And I just want to say, in my opinion, please no electric or hybrid vehicles. You know, please investigate it before, you know, contempt for, prior to investigation, you know, that old saying. Cause I think, well, you know, maybe options need to be wa, weighed, because we could end up spending more money in the long run if you go the electric or hybrid vehicle route, you know? Stick to what works, you know? Ford, built tough.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Patricia Griffith, Brown Street, Delran. Um, I would just like to say, before I get started, I have two questions. Before that, I would like to clarify that a lot of us are involved asking questions, because this is the only time for us to ask questions about stuff that goes on. Like you saw the whole budget, we haven't seen it yet. So when we come up and ask questions, it's just for clarity, we're trying to, we all, I think, both sides want what's best for the town. We don't all agree how to get there, but we're here because we're trying to find out more information, so we can all make the best choices for how we spend the money and how we run the town. That being said, you might, um, you know, you have to consider that people have different, um, different priorities, how they think it should go. So just don't, like, just because we're asking questions doesn't mean it's like an attack, it's just. It's just that we're trying to get information. So I think we should all agree that we're trying to do what's best. All right, so one of my questions is, what is the average starting cost for the police? Like, when we hire a new police person? Does anybody know?
Yeah, what, I mean, what-
Like, when you have a new police officer, when you have a new police officer, what, what does the average starting pay? Okay, so I'm just wondering how that compares with other towns? Like, is that a reason that we have trouble? Or is it, in general, all over?
I'll comment on that in my comments.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I have is, what kind of super duper fancy lawn mowers are these? I would like to see one. For that, for that amount of money, that sounds like, I want to see this lawnmower. It's just like, I know it's two, but that seems like a very high price for lawn mowers. And, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I didn't do a lot of research. I did minimal research on lawn, lawn mowers. But how big is this thing that's 144 inch to cut a swath? So I just have a question about that. That seems like really, really high. I mean, I know the company is a good company, but that's a, I would like someone to address that, if possible.
I'll do it in my, my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
PJ Buzzey, Vice President of the Historical Society. Just wanted to give a little report for you guys. So one of the first things is we have our annual hoagie sale running until June 30th. If anybody is interested in buying tickets, you can do it here. It's for Vid's Deli. Each ticket's $7. It helps fund our yearly expenses for insurance and filing taxes with the state. We also have a T-shirt sale. You can get more information about that on the website or out in the lobby. Some other issues we're working on is the historical site markers. We have them printed. They're in the public works. Last I heard, we're waiting for the public works to get the polls for them. And then, once they can work it into their schedule, they will. Let's see. And the other thing is the photo, extra photo portraits we have, like, out in the lobby. We're working on plans to see where they're going to fit in the municipal building. Couple places we're thinking is in the courtroom here, halls, fit in the mayor's office. So we're still working on that. And then, just lastly, I wanted to say, wanted to thank Mayor Hutchins for coming to our last public meeting just to understand what we do and to get a better, you know, just all that. Also, wanted to thank the council for your continued support and for making the lobby what it is, helping us, you know, make it a reality, and just all the other projects that we do and storage and all that sort of thing.
We didn't, we didn't make the lobby. You guys did. We just let you do it, so thank you.
Agreed, agreed. Thanks for giving us the go-ahead, though. And that's all I have to report for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes?
John Repper, Delran. Two questions. The first one is, you guys mentioned that there's a $7 million surplus in the sewer account. So if that's the case, why are we borrowing $300,000? So we do, we have the money to just take that out and just get it paid back when the county's going to pay it back. So that's my one, it seems wasteful to borrow that money. That's my one comment. And the other one is, I noticed with the minutes for approval, like, they're from January 14th, January 28th, February 25th, and March 11th. So, like, why four, four months in arrears like that? I go to other meetings around the county, and they get them approved the, the next month. So I'm just wondering, is there a particular reason? It's like, four months is a third of the year. So I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking. So you'll answer that during your, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yep.
Anybody else? Seeing no hands, take a motion to come out of the public? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one opposed. All right, we'll move on to reports. Emergency services. I did see Joe earlier. He is not here, so we'll move on. Boards and committees, you already gave yours. Anybody else from any of the boards or committees? RAC, Green Team? Go for it.
Hi, I'm Sam. I'm with the RAC. I just wanted to report on our Easter egg hunt, Spring Festival, which happened last Saturday. It was a great turnout. The kids had a great time. We're so grateful to everyone involved in the RAC and all of the volunteers who came out. And our next event starts tomorrow. It's going to be our first annual 08075 can sing competition. And everybody remember that the winner of that competition is going to get 30 minutes at Delran Night Out so we can support our local talent. So come on out, watch them audition, and then come support our Top 20 on the three weeks in May. So that's what we got right now, guys.
Cool.
All right.
Green Team? No, I don't see anything. Anybody else from boards or committees? I do not see any. Next up, engineering. Ed, you have anything besides what we laid out earlier?
Yeah, I got a couple things. You know what? I'm going to go after so I don't steal Jamie or the mayor's thunder.
Okay, that's fine. We'll defer.
I'll go after the mayor.
We'll defer. All right. So next up would be the administrator, the township clerk, Jamie Eggers. And could you comment on the minutes in your report, please? Thank you.
Okay, so first, just a couple items. Last week, or actually several weeks ago, we were reached out by Congressman Conaway's office to resubmit for, we had approved, been asked to resubmit our application. This was for funding that was previous allotted in the fiscal year 2025 House, but the projects were not funded. So last week, with the help of Ed's office, we submitted, we resubmitted. This is for improvements to Don Deutsch Fields, including parking lot and installation of lights. So I don't know how soon we'll, we could hear something on that, but that application has been resubmitted. Also, a quick Army Corps update. They, they have finished the geotechnical drillings and are continuing lab work and then proceeding with their engineering design for the stream bank stabilization. Our represent, or our project manager, I'm sorry, Joel, for the Army Corps, is leaving the position, his position with the Army Corps as of May 1st. So we hope to have, in the next few weeks, a meeting with our new project manager as soon as we can. And then, the Public Works Department held their cleanup days, April 9th to the 12th, very successful as it always is. And we will have another cleanup event in the fall. With regards to the minutes, yes, we are a little bit behind. As you know, I've taken on, you know, the duties of the township administrator. So we are working very hard to get those minutes. The next meeting, we should be all caught up to April. So with the help of Melissa, who's been great in my office, we are, we should be all caught up. And then we hope to every public meeting approve the ones from the month before. That's our plan going forward.
Beautiful. Thank you. Melissa's awesome.
And just, just a quick note on the budget again for the public. We will be introducing the budget at the May, I should have the dates, but I don't.
The 13th is the first meeting.
The 13th? Okay, so May 13th. And then, after that, we will have a PowerPoint presentation. The budget will be posted on the website. You can get a copy of it. If you have any questions, you can always come to the meeting or, you know, always reach out to me, the mayor, Tom, anybody on council, if you have any questions, specific budget questions. And then the public hearing will happen at the first public meeting in June. And you'll also have, you know, we have a public hearing on the budget, so that'll be another opportunity to ask any questions before final adoption.
Yeah, so that, that budget will be online.
Yes. So there's always the regular budget, the, the full budget document, and then a, a user-friendly version of the same document.
And, and the reason it's not on the website right now is because we're having our internal discussions.
Correct.
And from where we are right now, what gets posted may or may not change.
Correct.
So that's why we have the work session where we have our opportunity to talk and stuff like that.
Yeah, so once, once council is done, the mayor made the presentation, and once council's done reviewing, then I will send all the final things with any changes to the auditor, and they will prepare the budget document.
Beautiful. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Next up, Mayor.
All right, I want to thank Ed for not stealing my thunder. So first thing we're going to bring, I want to bring up is the Leon Ave. project is moving forward. And I would like residents, especially in that area, to be aware that we're going to be sending out a notification letter next week for a resident meeting for any questions that's going to be relating to that project as it comes along. Second, I want to talk about, a lot of people brought up some stuff last week that I just kind of wanted to address as far as, like, our communications and newsletter. I know it's going slow, but when I do roll this out, I want it to be perfect. I want it to be 100%. My wife happened to steal my thunder because I had actually spoke with Al earlier today. Somebody had brought up something very important, which was questions that get asked at these meetings. We respond to them in email, and a lot of these questions pertain to everybody in the community. And what a great idea to add that to the communications program where we respond to the resident in email, but we also post it as a Q and A on our new website so that if somebody has that question or a similar question, they can actually look it up and go, oh, okay. And I'm also going to be adding a reference to YouTube for the minutes of the meeting so that they can see when that question was asked and maybe get a little more information. I want to try to help them along with that. She stole my thunder is to 08075 can sing. We're very excited about this. I haven't seen all of the singers yet, but there's going to be some great people at this event. If anybody can make it out to Dooney's. I know the auditions are tomorrow night, from what, 6:00 to 10:00? But the competition will start on May 7th. There's three days, May 7th, May 14th, and then the finals will be on May 21st. It's going to run from 6:00 to 10:00. And like she said, they're going to be competing for an opportunity to perform and open the first 30 minutes of Delran's Night Out. Historical Society, thank you. You guys, if anybody gets the opportunity, find out when their meetings are. What are the meeting dates? When's the next one?
May.
May what?
I don't have the date on me, but May.
Okay. What these guys are doing over there is exciting. The entire time I was there, I was just enthralled at all the information that was just kind of getting thrown at me. And I got myself two new T-shirts. I love what it says on the back because I didn't know that until I read it and my son read it to me. Make sure I didn't leave anything out here. Oh, I remember. Somebody had mentioned the lawn mowers, 144 inches. So 144, I'm just going to give you what I got on this. 144-inch mower actually is going to help the public works. Instead of them sending two or three mowers to one location, this will actually free up guys because one guy can do a much larger area, and it'll free the other guys up to work on some of the other things that we need to address. That's the purpose behind it. We have a lot of large field areas. And right now, we're using two and three guys for, you know, one area. And with these, one guy can go out and cut, and the other, you know, one or two gentlemen can work on some other important areas of the town. Is that it? I, why, are you done with me?
No.
Now, I, uh-
You took a breath.
I did. The hybrid vehicle thing, we'll have to look into that. I'm not, like I said, I'm not sold on it. It's just, it may need to get, you know, used for pursuit at one point, or... Yep, that's it. I'll end it there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ed, you got anything to add, or you're good?
Yeah, no, I got a couple things. So Leon Ave., as the mayor said, there'll be a letter coming from my office next week. We'll, we'll identify a date that the meeting will most likely be held here. You'll be able to come and ask me any questions as well as our construction manager pertaining to the project specifically. And then, we also, I actually have a separate question for, for council, but I'll get to that after my other update. PSCNG started test bits today in the Millside neighborhood. If you live in that neighborhood and you have not gotten a notification, feel free to reach out to our office, and I will contact their project manager. They are planning on starting main installation tomorrow for the replacement main within that neighborhood. It's going to take many months. The New Jersey American Water is going to be following up behind them, and then the township is going to be coming in as well. So you guys are going to be disrupted for, for a, a little bit. So pertaining to Leon, and I will get the full details from the contractors. I just got a question, a couple hours ago from them. They are going to be seeking to try and work at night for CCTV purposes, which is most likely going to consist of mechanical cleaning and cleaning of the sewers prior to the CCTV associated with the project. So I will have all that information to Jamie, hopefully by the next meeting for your, your vote on whether or not they can do that, so.
All right, well, we'll work in conjunction with the, with the police, and we'll, we'll figure it out whether that's the option.
Yep.
You good?
Stewart Ave., the second part? When, I mean, I'm usually not home, so I'm like, when does that start?
It has not been advertised for bid yet.
Okay.
We have received DOT approval.
All right, next up, Solicitor Al Mararo.
No, outside of the work session discussion and executive session, I have nothing additional, Mr. President.
Thank you, Al. All right, we'll start with council members, far right, Tom Morrow.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and with your questions. Believe me, nobody objects to them. At least I don't, so I don't speak for myself, but I enjoy questions. One thing I talked about, can we get the zoning and planning board meetings up on YouTube? I don't know if that's possible, but I'd like to see that. I think that the residents should be aware of what goes on in those two boards, since they're critical in our township. So we have ours on there. I think those two boards should also be on there, so we can, when it comes to construction, you guys can see what's going on. When it comes to rezoning, you can see how that works. So I think it's a valuable tool, YouTube. So I think it's something, if we can do that, Jamie, please.
Yep, okay.
Ed, I don't know if you, I'm not going to put you on the spot tonight, but the next work session, I'd like to have an update on the, with, when you walked, went with Matt on the crosswalks, crossing guard locations.
So that is something that our office is working on with the police department, that they're going to be submitting the grants on behalf of the township.
Okay, awesome. Also, Jamie, I guess on the next work session, I'd like to have an update where we are on the house rental registrations. Since that notice went out, what, a month or two ago, we sent the letters out, I think the code enforcer was telling us, about inspections and getting the house rentals registered, according to the ordinance that was passed last year, correct?
Okay.
I'd like to see that. One thing, I'm getting a lot of complaints, and one thing that bothers the hell out of me is the freaking car noise. The mufflers, I know we got something sent to us, I'm not going to take the time, if you want to comment on this too, because I know it was sent to you, but the car noises and the mufflers and the stuff is outrageous, and it's, takes away the quality of life from everybody. When you're sitting in your living room, and that noise is in your living room, that's a, that's a quality of life issue, and noise issue and so forth. And I know I talked to Matt, we talked in length about that, and I know we have to get more patrolmen, and you can't have them out there everywhere, you know, but it's a problem, not just in our town, it's all over the place. So, you know, I think we can do something about it in near future, try to get some control of it, because I'm telling you, it is, it's, it's outrageous. It really is. It's out of control. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, Nikki Pia due.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Nikki. Next up, Marlo?
Yeah, thanks so much. Just a couple of quick things. Just in reference to like the hybrid vehicle, just to clarify, the kind of vehicle I'm speaking about doesn't require, like, to be plugged in. It just has a battery that uses, you know, either when you brake, or if you're idling, it recharges the battery, so that it uses the battery before it switches over to gas. Vehicles like that tend to get, you know, over thirty miles a gallon. And there really aren't any, like, performance issues. I actually have one, I mean, believe it or not, it's almost twenty years old. Never had to change the battery, and it works perfectly fine, but just to see if, you know, potentially you can save the township some money. Obviously, want to look at something that, you know, would be appropriate for, you know, their services. I do believe other towns do have those kinds of vehicles as well, so just wanted to make that point. Also, wanted to switch subjects and talk about the Del Ran Historical Society. Please support their hoagie sale and T-shirt sale they have going on. I do tremendous work within the town. So many of our volunteers with all the organizations, they're the backbone bone of this town, that they're the reason that, you know, so many things get done. So we just wanted to support them, you know, in any way we can. Next, you know, this week, a lot of the kids are off at school, so be careful as you're driving around. I noticed, you know, after dinner, I'm starting to see a lot more kids now that the weather's getting better, running around, doing all the things kids do. They don't always pay attention to, you know, what's going on in the road, so be careful as you're driving around. I wanted to also mention with, what Councilman Morrow mentioned about putting the zoning and planning boards on YouTube, I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm very supportive of that. And lastly, just wanted to mention again, for those that might have extra paper laying around, if you want to do some spring cleaning, the county is hosting a paper shredding event on Sunday, May fourth, from nine AM to one PM. It's a Randers Shine event. It's going to be at Burlington County Institute of Technology at six ninety-five Wood Lane Road in West Hampton. You can bring up to four boxes or four bags worth of paper. I utilized this earlier this year, when I was going through, doing my taxes, got rid of, you know, year eight, that I won't leave anymore, in addition to some other documents that I had, bills and things like that. So take advantage, it's a great thing that the county does. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Marlo. Next up, Council Vice President, Jamie.
Thank you, Council President. One suggestion, I made this suggestion before, individuals come to our meetings and ask questions or have comments that could be answered if you called the township. We have great people here, we have a great staff, they're very responsive to our residents, and a lot of these questions can be answered before coming to the public meeting. Or you can get a better answer by getting to the correct individual, instead of coming to council, where, you know, we don't work day to day with the operation. So feel free to call the township. I know they're very receptive. The Green Team, we are in the middle of planting season. We just planted about ten trees so far. We began planting the wildflower micro forest over on the jug handle, for one thirty. If you look back, you'll see a lot of trees there. There are probably close to twenty at this point. We have another twenty on the truck out in the public works yard that Al Carp is in charge of directing the planting, and we will be planting those shortly. Also, the Historical Society, PJ, thank you very much. I am so thrilled to hear that you're interested in decorating our walls with the Historical Society's artifacts. I've seen many of them, and I would've talked about it before. I am thrilled to see, because we could fill these walls with good, solid history of Del Ran, and then bring people in and have some Historical Society meetings here, and let Del Ran people learn about the township. Congratulations to the RAC, the Easter egg hunt, and it was interesting, to say the least. A lot of young people go berserk over Easter eggs, and it was really well done. Thank you for the volunteers and all those people put on, it was extremely well done. Thursday, the twenty-fourth, one more thing I wanted to mention. A woman was interested in the sewer system in Del Ran, and this evidenced by the report that was given tonight by professional engineers, our sewer system is in very good condition. It's an old system in many areas. Part of the system was put in in the sixties, part of it was before that, and more in the nineties as well. We have been working for the last number of years, since I've been on council, this is my fifth year, on replacing sewer and water and gas pipes. Our infrastructure is important, and it's important, and we continue to do these things. And we've done, we've been very successful in negotiating with our partners like PSCNG, the Water Company, and, you know, the other companies that will be digging up and doing things under the streets to help pay for the repavement. I did a quick number on the last one we did. We spent about forty-five percent of what it really cost to repave those streets. So this is extremely well planned. Their sewer is in really good shape. We have to upgrade it. I've been through the sewer plant myself, and I was in there, in fact, four years ago, and we looked at some things that have been repaired. It needs constant repair. That's in constant action over there. Our people do a great job of maintaining it, and it's good that our engineers are on top of identifying what needs to be done to service it, to keep it going. Thursday, this Thursday, day after tomorrow, the twenty-fourth, we will have the climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment meeting here. It's a public meeting, open to all residents. We urge all residents who are interested in how climate change may affect Del Ran, particularly the Riverside Park area, but other areas of town as well. There'll be Cinnamons in Palmyra, I believe Riverside are also invited. This is a county-sponsored event, and there'll be a presentation, and then there'll be a workshop afterwards, where people will be able to see layouts of what they're talking about and provide input on this. So we urge any resident who's interested in that to attend at six thirty to eight o'clock on this Thursday. It'll be here in the municipal building. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And for my report, I'll go through some of the things that came up this evening. I think we already answered the civil service question. We're not looking to just throw officers out there that are not trained properly. As for the hybrid or electric vehicles, I think a whole study needs to be done on what the infrastructure that we would have to put in place for the vehicles, what vehicles we have, how would they be used. I know the fully electric ones, they have problems in the cold weather. They don't get the range or anything like that. So I think that's something that's down the road, that's not out of line to actually take a look and maybe do a feasibility study. When it comes to the budget with police, hiring new police officers, the only part of the cost is paying them when you get them on and your training and whatnot. There's a lot of cost when it comes to uniforms, because you have to buy them their whole first new set of uniforms. And as they go through, they have wear and tear and replace. But there's a lot of ancillary costs than just the actual salary. And then, of course, you have healthcare and pension contributions. So to put a specific number on it, you'd have to look at a lot of variables, some that are in the future that you don't know. The mayor already touched on the lawn mowers, the hundred and forty-four inch. What they do is they cut a wider swath, and instead of having two guys on the mower, you could have the one guy weed whacking and doing the cleanup, and you could knock out a park in less time. They also go really fast, so the public works guys need to get some training on it to make sure they're safe operating those particular mowers. When we look at the sewer system, it could always be better. We do have a seven million dollar surplus there. Big proponent of, we need to do more maintenance, more maintenance, and replace what we need to replace at a fast clip. And if we need to raise sewer rates, if we're spending down that surplus, if it's not, you know, something small, to keep ahead of it, I think we need to do it. Because that's a quality of life issue. Your water needs to come on, your toilets need to flush, and you don't have an issue. So we really do need to deal with that. Minutes, Jamie touched on that. The emails. If questions come up that we don't know the exact answer, and we don't want to give an erroneous answer by what we think it is, that's why we say we'd like to get back you to an email. And literally, if you get an email from us with an answer that you think you want to share, you know, obviously, if you come to this meeting, and you have your five minutes of public comment, you could express that, and like the mayor said, if we can get it all on the website, that's another tool. The car noise. I did get an email from someone. It was also, Tom was copied on it. I got it over immediately to the police department to see what they can do. We do have those meters to measure noise or whatnot. Some of the issues we have in town actually come from across the river, those boom parties. I don't hear them where I live, but then again, they're late at night, and I sleep like a rock. I don't hear anything. But I know people in my neighborhood say they can hear it. I just, I just don't hear them. So if there is a noise issue, or is the person brought up with an eyesore in town, bring it up. We'll get code enforcement on it, we'll get the police on it, we'll do everything we can to take care of it. And once again, I'd just like to say thank you to all our boards and committees for all the work they do. I wasn't able to go to the Spring Festival slash Easter egg hunt, but I've been to a few, and like I said last time, it is controlled chaos. It's fun to watch. But I do appreciate all those volunteers. And that is my report. So right now, we're going to go and, we're going to get a motion to go into executive session. We're not anticipating taking any action, but we will come back into public. Can I get a motion to go into executive session, please? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We're going to adjourn to executive session. Hearing none. We're going to adjourn to executive session.
Sit here.
All right, we are good to go.
All right, I need a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Harry, none. We're out of executive session. Back in the regular meeting. There'll be no action taken based on the executive session. So can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Harry, none. Motion, uh, meeting's adjourned.